Can you use the camera schedule? Is that last meeting?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
What is that? Oh, the camera view?
Yeah, this is the schedule.
We don't have to call.
If you come to one of my meetings, I'll show you how to get on Zoom. And yes, you can use the tablet. You know, it's a good idea.
I mean, it's gonna help.
Listen. Same just gets materials.
Okay, that's normal.
Good evening.
There's some people here. So maybe we're not.
What's your shift?
I'm sorry, I'm going to the rest of the room.
Hey, how many? What?
Yeah.
Look at the number one.
Presentation, please.
Okay. Oh, hold on, I turned it on. This is the...
This is charge. He's at eight percent.
It was trying to do an update.
February 8th, the county commission is now in session.
All right. Benton County County Commission is now in session, representing Ward here.
Um, Mr. Murray, would you please say your name first, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, thanks for bringing us here together. Please place your hand upon us while as we make decisions for the county. Please help us make decisions with wisdom and help us get through until our next meeting. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I plead your allegiance. I plead your allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angie Turner? Here. Don Fadner?
Here.
War Planet? Senator Ferguson?
Yep.
Smith Miller?
Here.
Rocky Preston?
President Shaw Logan.
Claye Dye? Norman Fraser?
Here.
Gary Carter?
Here.
Wayne Fowler?
Here.
Sonny Paul? Phil Melton?
Here.
Michelle Hill?
Here.
Mike Hunter?
Here.
Rosalind Ward?
Here.
Gerald Gates?
Here.
Ronnie Hopper? Mary Powers?
Here.
Both being on the train, I'm sure.
Okay, people, I have your head. Now, do you mark that you're here? Right here. Mr. Fur, I believe you're here.
Yes.
So on your number?
Right.
So, thank you very much. We do that for him. Next on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Another one.
Second.
Angie Turner? Angie Turner? Yes. Don Fadner?
Yes.
War Planet? Uh, what was on your agenda? Senator Ferguson?
Here.
Smith Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Claye Dye? Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Carter?
Yes.
And Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Hunter?
Yes.
Rosalind Ward? Yes. Gerald Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Turner is, Don Fadner is, War Planet is.
General proof.
Okay, okay, so that motion passed. Next is the commissioners' floor. We have three committees tonight. The first one that we want to recognize is Tanner Hudson. Would you like to come up and say anything, Tanner?
Come on, Brock.
Tanner and Karen, do you want to come up here with him? Yeah, come on up.
It's a moment, isn't it? All y'all can relate. Hopefully, if you're not, you will see.
I was gonna say, now, in the house of a, of a lot of elected officials who a lot of people probably would just soon throw out with the trash, we've got one bright shining star amongst us that makes us look good. So, and I don't know how many people's ever rooted for Tom Brady, but we all became Tom Brady fans for the first time this year because we knew he was so into you. But in our house today, we have Tanner Hudson. I don't think he, you know, needs an introduction. You're, thank goodness you're not running for office against some of us because you're the most popular man in Benton County and we're in trouble. But we just want to say on a county level, first of all, congratulations on the accomplishment that, and the experience that you've gone through. A lot of people might be able to say they played in college or get maybe to the pros, but to make it to a Super Bowl and be a part of the Super Bowl champion team, everyone in Benton County, and I think probably for 100 miles around us, have all endeared themselves to you and to see the hard work that you put through in representing Benton County the way you have. Part of this is to recognize you and to say thank you. We've got bigger plans down the road. We know that you've got a busy schedule and we're thankful that you set aside some of your time to be here. I also want to recognize your mother and, you know, your late father being here too and your grandfather. I've grown up with them. They're like family to me and you've got good raising. And, and, and to see you excel at the highest level and, and just perform and be part of that experience, you know, our, our hats off to the wonderful parenting and, and family that you've got that has supported you the whole way and developed you into the great young man. And I hope that some days your travels bring you back to Benton County on a permanent level. But for right now, on behalf of Benton County, like I said, it's not that I need to give you a key to anything. I think you can walk in and you're going to get free dinners and everybody's going to get out of the way because here comes Tanner Hudson. But on behalf of Benton County, all the representatives of Benton County, we would like, at this time, provide you a key to the county and a couple of other little tokens. And we appreciate all that you do and all that you represent, the best of Benton County. We're happy to have you here and good luck and, and, you know, best wishes in the future never that you continue forward in uniform.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, I mean, this is an honor that, you know, I never thought I'd get. Um, just, you know, the way the county just kind of circled around me and, you know, even before the Super Bowl, you know, just all the support that everybody's given me, you know, is just, it's indescribable. With the souls, even the surrounding town, like, everybody has just been so supportive and helpful and, you know, it makes me push myself that much harder to think that everybody is looking towards me. Everybody's kids are looking towards me and, you know, just trying to be that role model that, you know, someone for them to look up to, you know, that's, that's what kind of gets me out of the bed in the morning and, and helps me strive to be a better person, you know, a better son, a better man, you know, one day a better husband, like, you know, just all those things, all these kids, all of y'all just pushing me through that, you know, I, I can't say thank you enough. And then, obviously, my mom, you know, I, I can't, there's really no words.
Don't get us crying, Tanner. We don't want to cry.
I try. Um, if there's anything, you know, that I ever need, I know, I can just pick up the phone and call her. She takes care of me throughout anything, you know. Every time I'm home, I'm in Tampa, I mean, if I need anything, I know I can call her and she'll be there and, you know, without getting too emotional, you know, that's, I just, you know, I know I couldn't do anything without her. And same goes for, you know, my dad. He, I can do this. Um, you know, he, he got me to where I am today, you know. Anytime I wanted to do anything, go hit some walls at the park, catch passes, golfing, anything. He built, he built a golf hole in our front yard. He's built some uprights in the front yard when I wanted to kick, you know, just whatever he's needed, whatever I've needed, he's always been there. And then, you know, my sister, as much as I pick on her, had, you know, growing up in the years, she helped me through, through everything, you know, trying to be a better athlete, always wanting to beat her and, you know, I beat up on her a lot, but she helped me more than she knows. And same goes for my brother, you know, he's, I've always looked up to him. He's always going to be my big brother forever. And then, you know, my girlfriend Carly, when I'm in Tampa, when she's down there with me, she literally does everything for me. I don't lift a finger, you know, she takes care of me through it all. But, you know, once again, I can't thank all of y'all enough. I can't thank Benton County enough for the support that they give me. So, thank y'all.
Um, Tom Brady, is he, is he, is he a nice guy?
Oh, yeah. I'll cheer for him for a good reason. I'll cheer for him for a good reason. He's a great guy.
Hey, what about Brock?
Even better. Even better.
Thank you, Dan. We're, we're happy to have you.
I would just want to say that it's, if, you know, if your mom's going to support you on Brock's party vote, I think she would follow him.
Okay, next for the citizen reform is Dr. Scott Forrest.
I'll take this mask off if it's all right with everybody. What an act of faith. Again, I am Dr. Scott Forrest and I told Rocky Preston right before this meeting, I see a whole lot of new faces that I haven't seen before. Some of you I do know, but most of you I do not. Let me start off by giving you my phone number if you want to copy it down. If you ever need to call the medical examiner, I'm on call 24/7, 365. My number is 731-343-1706. And you can reach me there day or night. Now, a little bit about my background, I have been your medical examiner in Benton County and Henry County also since 2012. I was the medical examiner in Carroll County for 36 years before that, before moving over to Benton and Henry County. My dad was on the county commission in Carroll County for many, many years, and I saw the trials and tribulations that he went through and swore that I would never be a politician because of that. My hats off to each of you here for serving Benton County and the citizens of Benton County. I know you have a lot on your shoulders right now. Okay, what, what do I do? I supervise a team of 11 death investigators in Benton and Henry County. Bruce Heron is my chief death investigator in Benton County and a man named Matt McClure is my invest, chief investigator in Henry County. Now, we have nine death investigators who work under these two fellows. We have five in Benton County and four in Henry County. And these are all very well-trained individuals. They're all paramedics to the last one. We have one girl who is also a nurse practitioner along with her credentials of being a paramedic. Couple of these people work in clinics, but they have the paramedic training and know very well how to be death investigators. Exactly what do we do? What kind of deaths do we investigate? Natural deaths are number one. These are people who die of natural causes, heart disease, kidney failure, and unfortunately, COVID-19. We also take care of accidents, fires, drownings, car wrecks, and any other accidental death that happens. Suicides, I have seen a pretty marked increase in the number of suicides since COVID-19 has hit us. And then there's the bad word of homicides. And I work very closely with Sheriff Christopher over here in this county and Sheriff, I mean, Police Chief Smith on deaths, the homicide in Benton County. Fortunately, we have a tool called an autopsy in which if we have a death that is in, we don't know exactly what happened, we can always send the individual for a autopsy. We have to send it to the forensic center in Nashville, Tennessee. I had a case recently in which I had to come to Camden General and pronounce someone dead, took my pictures, drew my blood, and thought, talked to the family and thought everything was okay. Sent the decedent to the funeral home. And the next day, I got a call from the sheriff's department saying that this could have been a possible homicide. So immediately, I called the funeral home, said, "Don't do anything else." They said, "Well, we've already infused her." I said, "Well, let me call forensic." I called Nashville and sure enough, they said, "We can still do an autopsy, but you won't have any blood." I said, "Nope, I did draw my blood." So I sent the body and the blood to Nashville for the autopsy. Luckily, they did not find any reason to call this a homicide. And with COVID now, it had, it, it has added an extra burden to my job in both counties. In 19, I mean, 2019, in Benton County, there were 81 deaths. In 2020, there were 108 deaths, which is a 35% increase in the number of deaths. And at one time, about a month ago, 60% of the people that I was saying that they were dead were COVID victims, it's dropped down now since then. Let me just interject this right now. I heard a couple of, of your commissioners talking about somebody's had two vaccines, somebody's had one. I would encourage each and every one of you and the people in the audience to get your vaccine. This is the only way I can see that we're going to control COVID-19, to get this herd immunity that Dr. Fauci is talking about. Get your vaccine. If you've got some reason that you don't want to take it, come and see me after this meeting or during a break, and I will try to steer you in the right direction. Dr. Dan Davis, who was a previous emergency physician at Henry County Medical Center, I saw him Sunday as my wife was getting her second vaccination at the Carroll County Health Department. I said, "Dan, what do you tell people who are reluctant to take the vaccine?" He said, "Well, people under 60, 1% of those people who get COVID are going to die. You don't want to be that 1%. Of people over 60, 20% of those people who get COVID are going to die. I don't, I don't want to have COVID. I've had my second Moderna shot and I'm three weeks past it now, so I think I will be safe. I hope so. I'm still going to wear my mask and do my social distancing, wash my hands and use my sanitizer." Okay, the real reason I'm here tonight is because I have a big problem in Benton County. Not so much in Henry County, but in Benton County I do. Even though we have five death investigators plus Bruce Heron, I am having to take a lot of death investigator call myself. At the very first of February, with 28 days, I had 15 days in which I was going to have to be the death investigator. And the reason for this is the paramedics are having to work overtime in their facilities, you know, and when the supervisor comes to them and says, "Hey, you've got to work a double shift today," they have to do this. And they can't take death investigator call in Benton County for me. So what I want to do is to pull a good friend of mine out of retirement. He's here with me tonight, Mr. M.L. Bailey. I want to pull him out of retirement. He retired two years ago in Henry County. And I have coerced him or persuaded him, whatever you want to call it, into coming back to be a death investigator again and to help me and my other death investigators in Benton County. Here are his credentials. He has EMT training he did in Paris. He has paramedic training and the certificate, which he did at Nashville. He was captain of the Paris Henry County Rescue Squad for five years, Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy in Nashville. He joined the Henry County Sheriff's Department in 1987. He was a Henry County death investigator for 16 years. He was a bailiff in the Henry County Court for 14 years. He was a court officer. He was on the court security team, and he's had some special death investigator training. I have the ability to appoint M.L. Bailey to be one of my death investigators, but this court must approve him. Chairwoman, do I have your permission to appoint him and then to have a vote of him tonight? We can answer any questions you have or any comments that you want to make. Is this, am I in order?
Montez, I've got the commission. By your mighty grace, if that would be mine.
Okay, let me ask Mr. Bailey to stand up. He's a very dear friend of mine. We worked very closely together in Henry County for three years until he retired. But I grant you, he has all the credentials to be a death investigator, and he will help me immensely in this county. What do I need to do? Do I need to turn it over to you?
Well, you said you had the authority to appoint him.
I have the authority of the Tennessee Code to appoint him as a medical death investigator.
You just want the permission to?
To prove, yes, yes. I mean, we'll answer any questions that you have or comments that you want to make, but...
And I made a motion to do this. Oh, first, ma'am? Okay.
I'll second it.
We know a motion to suspend rules by Mr. Ferguson and seconded by Commissioner Nunney. You'll take us, we're learning this stuff. Okay, now we can vote.
Everybody needs a, uh, I need a second.
Second is my number. Well, that went bad. Doesn't have it.
Want to go ahead and vote?
We're voting on the person that, um...
M.L. Bailey.
...spent rules. Right now, we're voting on to suspend the rules. We're suspending the rules on Dr. Forrest. So we have... Dr. Forrest, what is the gentleman's name?
M.L. Bailey. Malcolm L. Bailey, Jr.
Dr. Forrest is wanting to suspend the rules so we can apply M.L. Bailey, so we can force him here in Henry County when he's asked.
Yes, ma'am.
Denver, Denver. And we're suspending the rules by, by the motion again, or pinned by the motion and my number, second. Can we vote?
So, Angie Turner?
Angie Turner?
Yes.
Don Fadner is, War Planet? Senator Ferguson is, Smith Miller is, Rocky Preston is, Claye Dye is, Norman Fraser is, Gary Carter is, Wayne Fowler is, Phil Melton is, Michelle Hill is, Mike Hunter is, Rosalind Ward is, Gerald Gates is, Ronnie Hopper is, Mary Powers is. Anyone that you wish to take your vote? Anyone who wishes to change their vote? Motion carries.
Chairwoman, please, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And that, that was, that was calling to suspend the rules. That was a motion to accept him to...
We're what? President?
Okay, you want a second? All right, so we're voting for that.
Now, we're voting as experienced, I guess. It's all there for, for that point. Yeah, for this, I mean, Mr. Bailey. Then I remember votes. Angie Carr?
Yes.
Don Hutton? Yes. Ward Plant? Diana Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Paulie Dye, yes. Tony Frager, yes. Gary Farm, yes. The Whitefellow, yes. Bill Melton, yes. Cheryl Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Rose and Ward, yes. Gerald Hakes, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Power, yes. Anyone who wishes to change their vote? Motion carries.
Chairwoman Moore, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Very glad you asked, Mayor.
Susan, if you want to come here just a second, I want to introduce to y'all our new Benton County Tourism Director, Miss Susan Olden Knolls. And last night, the Tennessee River Resort District Board had their final interviews with the candidates that had applied. And, you know, Miss Knolls was the unanimous choice. They went through a couple of interviews, a lot of scrutiny of your professional credentials. You had to earn your way here. You know, you know that process that you went through last time was very thorough. And I believe we've got a great tourism director in you. I think he's going to do really big things for the county. And I know that we had commissioners present last night in the Tennessee TRRD Board is what we tend to call it. There's probably a little bit of confusion, what is the TRRD Board? And it's basically a board that Benton County has adopted. It's by state statute for certain counties along the Tennessee River that are allowed to create a formative board that reinvests your tax dollars into tourism-related events within the county. It's funded from the seven percent state sales tax formula. It doesn't come out of our local option sales tax. It comes to the money that normally we would be sending to the state of Tennessee. And by having this board in place, we're able to get monies recouped back to Benton County that we normally would never, ever realize had we didn't have that board. So tourism is a big industry in Benton County. Although it's the number-two industry in the state of Tennessee, we know in Benton County, with our lake and our outdoors, that tourism is a big, big deal in Benton County. We're happy to have a tourism department created. We've got a tourism director that's in place. And you and I talked earlier today about the unlimited opportunities that we have to really, really develop tourism-related events in Benton County. I want to welcome you on board to the Benton County family, and I'm really excited about what we can achieve in the future. If you want to just take, take the floor for a second and say any words, you're more than welcome to.
I'm Susan Knolls. If you don't know me, I know some of you here. I was born and raised here in Benton County. I left for my education with my husband, and we decided to come back to Benton County and raise our family. We wanted to be a part and help make the place that helped make us who we are better. I'm very passionate about communications, marketing, sales in Benton County. So those things combined, I believe that our tourism department has endless possibilities. And I'm excited to be on the forefront of bringing huge possibilities to tourism to Benton County. And I'm excited to hear all of your ideas, opinions, and thoughts on what you believe Benton County is, because I can't wait to start branding and marketing Benton County so that everyone else can experience what we already know we have, because we choose to call this place home and make it better.
Well, thank you for, like I say, joining the family, and we're looking for big things. Angela, I know she played a significant part.
I'm really excited.
Angela joins, I hope.
Good for you.
A little bit circular then, not thick in between. All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Miss Knolls? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just to make this real brief, I want to share with you, there's two sites in Benton County that were surveyed in 1941, a Civil War site. It was a battle on the Tennessee River on the Benton County side between seven gunboats and about several hundred Confederates. And that's just what I've forgotten about. And there's one site, it's called Cocky Home, that is paleo site. And that site had broken all the rules for how they felt paleo lives lived and their habits and their lifestyle. And the state of Tennessee had been excavating that, but they kept it real secret. So I'll share more of this with you, but I look forward to...
Absolutely, I'd love to hear more of that.
What can we?
Thank you so much. Thank y'all.
And next is the commissioners' forum. There are five commissioners that want to say everything. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll make it brief. Get my glasses on. I'd like to recognize Greg Pfeifer. Greg, not only is he a good friend of mine, he's a magnus man for our county buildings. Greg started the electrician program with Penn Foster College in April 2020. He's continuing his education for the job he does here for us in Benton County. It's a fourteen, it's an eighteen-month course, and Greg has graduated in ten months. He'll receive his diploma in a few weeks, so I just wanted to recognize him. And congratulate Greg on his accomplishment. Chairman, I yield the floor.
And any other commissioners that want to speak?
I'm sorry, I need their phone numbers. Thank you.
Any other moves?
Okay, I just have a few short things that I want to say, especially to our Facebook Live audience. I know that sometimes it may look like we're confused, but we have a new system up here, and we're still working on it. We're still trying to figure it all out and get it correct. So we just ask that you bear with us on that, and we will have this thing down perfect before long. One thing that makes everything go longer is because the governor has a law that says that as long as we're meeting electronically, we have to have roll call vote on every resolution. So that's why there's a change in our roll call right now, that we do take a roll call vote on everything. So that slows us down just a little bit. The last meeting, I had a lot of people say something about monitor the last four hours. Well, we had a lot of business last night that took a lot of discussions. And plus the system, you know, slowed us down and all that. But I just want everybody to bear with us. We will get better. As far as your statements, try to make your statements, like say what you want to say, and try not to just keep repeating. Once you make your statement, you know, kind of end it, that would help a little bit rather than just repeating on and on. I know sometimes we make jokes, and we do that in fun, but let's try to hold our jokes back a little bit, you know, get in a meeting and be a little bit more professional. So that's all I've got to say. So I want to turn it over to the mayor.
Well, I just want to say, again, you know, I'm thankful that Tanner Hudson showed up tonight. We know what kind of busy schedule he's got, and we've got things planned for him down the road, and it's really moving on. I'm thankful that Dr. Forrest, that you came and expressed the challenges that you're experiencing in, you know, you're far the world. No one really understands the coroners and the demand that a death investigator or a medical examiner may have. And we're thankful that we have you leading the way for Benton County. And you heard the challenges that he has. COVID places a whole new challenge on his staff. And no pun intended, that people aren't dying to get into your line of work, you know what I mean? So, so, but he's got some challenges that we really have to discuss yet. The first thing was, let's get his staff up. But financially, he's got some challenges. And so whether we present it in the budget, in the next budget, or whether we come sooner, we've got to recruit people to his line of work. And we're leaving Benton County, so I know we have the sheriff. The sheriff competes against neighboring counties and neighboring areas all the time. They're paying better wages, it's just a better deal. And it's no different in the coroner world and the medical examiner. So we're trying to formulate some type of financial adjustment to his budget, whether we do it now, that you need people boots on the ground right now, or whether we do it beginning on July first budget. Anyone that's on the Budget Committee, I hope that you kind of get this in consideration. And we're an elderly county, you know, the death rate may be abnormal than what you may see in some other counties. But it puts more strain on your staff, and those are just the challenges that you have. So thank you for coming and pretending to us tonight. Again, Miss Knolls being here, tourism is being in Benton County. I believe you're going to really begin seeing some tourism development. And from the county's perspective and the TRRD Board, it's good that we have got what we call our person that is going to be driving accountability and accurate data to be able to report back to these boards and commissioners when you have questions, but at the same time, help facilitate in tourism development. It is a big deal. It drives our sales taxes in Benton County. I know that I've sent y'all an email earlier this month, but in case you didn't get it, just for the last month, January 2021, compared to January of 2019, our sales taxes are up a hundred and forty-five percent. I mean, we've never realized those types of increases, especially during an economic downturn like that COVID season. Celebrate yourself. You know, the county government, y'all are making good decisions, you're moving this county forward. This is testimony to the quality of life that you built here in Benton County. Celebrate yourself. Recognize that we've got, we've got some momentum going. And so I'm excited about how we can take this and put it to use for the taxpayers. And just this last month, we'll see it on the next report, we received, I believe, the highest sales tax payment in county history, you know, for this month of February. Again, good news, good momentum, good financial monies coming our coffers. So again, I just want to say thank you for what all of you do to move this county forward. Again, it's a time of the citizens, of celebration, and give y'all a pat on the back. Now, Greg Pfeifer, I'm glad that Rocky brought up Greg Pfeifer, because a lot of times, some staff, they don't get noticed. You know, they work behind the scenes, I don't have to introduce Greg to anybody. But Greg and Ashley Travis both have completed courses that's bettering their skills and their job. We've actually completed a CCFO class, one of the hardest classes taught by C-Testers, by Nick. And Greg completed his program with electrical certification. Again, I'm glad to see that Benton County staff is working to improve their skills. And Rocky, thank you for just recognizing them. Meetings, I sent out an email to y'all about how we can improve our meetings. You know, if, there's times to get informed, and there's times to educate yourself on issues. And I told y'all from meeting after meeting after meeting, come by the mayor's office, okay? I've got a world of data right there that I can share, I can answer questions. If you're coming to the county commission meeting to get educated on an issue, you're already too late. You know, you're not going to get educated on issues in a one, two-minute type of segment. There are times that questions arise on the floor, natural questions, by all means, ask them. But, but I'm here as a resource, your chairman is there as a resource, the mayor's office is there as a resource. You know, learn your issues before you get to the floor, and maybe we can cut down on the lengthy meetings that we're having. So thank you for bringing that up, Chairman, and I yield the floor.
And then just put down to, now, number nine, four minutes. We need a motion in a second. A motion was made by Mr. Ferguson and signed by Mr. Miller. Angie Carr?
Yes.
Don Hutton, yes. Ward Plant? Ward Plant, he's still there. Diana Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Paulie Dye, yes. Tony Frager, yes. Did you vote, yes? Paulie Dye, yes. Tony Frager, yes. Gary Farm, yes. Bill Melton, yes. Cheryl Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Rose and Ward, yes. Gerald Hakes, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Power, yes. Anyone who wishes to change their vote? I'm watching, pass. Move on to number ten, report of the public vote. I have a question about Mr. Ferguson and a second about Mr. Nunne. Angie Carr?
Yes.
Don Hutton, yes. Ward Plant? Ward Plant? Ward Plant? Diana Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. I did it, thank you. Rocky Preston, yes. Paulie Dye, yes. I did it, thank you, Ward. Paulie Dye, yes. Tony Frager, yes. Gary Farm, yes. The Whitefellow, yes. Bill Melton, yes. Cheryl Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Rose and Ward, yes. Gerald Hakes, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Power, yes. Anyone who wishes to change their vote? Motion carries. Next is the equivalent of Tennessee rehab center. Our motion to, Mr. Ferguson and, Don Hutton? Long, long. Angie Carr?
Yes.
Don Hutton? Yes. Ward Plant? Ward Plant, yes. Diana Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Paulie Dye, yes. Tony Frager, yes. Gary Farm? Gary Farm, yes. The Whitefellow, yes. Bill Melton, yes. Cheryl Hill? Yes. Mike Henry, yes. Rose and Ward, yes. Gerald Hakes, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Power, yes. Anyone who wishes to change their vote? Motion carries.
Okay, before we start voting on our resolutions, which we're fixing to, we need to make sure that everybody understands your voting tablet. You've got the yes and the no and the abstain. As of now, because the software cannot be changed, you should not abstain unless you really have a conflict that you are abstaining and removing yourself from vote. So if you don't vote yes or no, and you want to pass, right now, you just don't vote at all. Because that's going to be counted as a no, which a pass kind of is anyway. But right now, if you hit the abstain because you think you want to pass, it's going to mess us up on our count up there. It's going to throw off the majority and all that. So if you want to pass, as of now, just don't hit a button. Don't pass. Don't push yes or no.
Don't push yes or no.
What I think is, if the timer times out and you have not pressed the button, it doesn't say that you voted yes or no. It actually says that you did not vote. And that's what the official record will show. And you did not vote, but it does not skew the letters.
How long is that time?
Forty-five seconds.
All right, so we got forty-five seconds, everybody, to make sure.
We can't stand to guess.
All right, so let's move on to resolution. Number one is making a performance to Benton County Animal Shelter Board. We have a motion by Mr. Patton and a second by Commissioner Dye. Does it have any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Fallon?
Yes, ma'am. We had approved this in law enforcement, but I have a few questions. We didn't have the information that I'm looking at now. It says, and I spoke with Ms. Hill about it, some of these people are already on that board or not, except that, you know, the shortest term is probably a year and maybe six or seven months. I talked with Rachel, and you still want to be on the board. Is that correct, ma'am?
To my knowledge, I am still on the board.
So, you know, like I said, we have a lot of this information that we're looking at now during the law enforcement. I'd just like to know, are these people want to add to the board? Or is that going to, what does that have?
These are replacements. We've had departures on the board over the last four, five months. And we just really haven't filled them. And so we've been waiting to get an accoutrement where we could have a full board. And so these are basically just full replacements of people who have departed the board.
Who's departed on the board?
You know the board, or I do, we have.
And Angela.
Yeah, Angela was the one, you have Angela.
Yeah. Wayne, we had a full board as of March of last year. Within a month of that, we had one board member who resigned. And because of COVID and various other problems, we were not able to replace that person in a time and a manner. So we crypt along with four people on the board instead of five for a period of time. At the point of your election to the county commission, the gentleman who you replaced had been on the board. And he stayed on the board for another couple of months, and then he also resigned. I resigned due to conflicts with my work schedule that I was not able to continue on the board. And then another person who had been on the board, Justin Ferrier, who had been elected to be the board chairman for the current year, she also chose to resign. So there had been four resignations from the board. And that's how it came to be, just only one person left. We had Miss Bush Jones, the only person left on the board. So these four people will be replacing those four people who had to resign.
I guess we do that for one. Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes. Is this, is this not the board where, didn't we pass a resolution? Were members from the different committees were to be served on that as an advisory? Ms. Rochelle was from the profit committee, if I remember correctly. I think there was one from law enforcement. Does that still apply? I mean, it's a goal to try to make sure that, like, stakeholders are invested in the board, represented on board. And I tell you, Ms. Hill kind of gives us a double benefit of, you know, having a sheriff's point of view and also property. We've got someone that does have some nonprofit experience. We wanted, any value that that annulance within Benton County would impact, we wanted to have some type of expertise and knowledge. And we feel like these particular individuals who are also recommended by the board, suggested by the board a lot of times, they vet them very well. And so I feel like this is a testament, we may not meet every key and got every eye on that. It's a goal we try to do, but this is a good board. We didn't hastily replace somebody. We allowed several months to go by, make sure we found a good people that's going to be invested. So I guess in terms of, you know, we'll make an exception every now and then if it's going to serve the board needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, ma'am. Of the names that were on the original Animal Shelter Board, Mr. Doug Bickers, is he remaining on that list? So the only one left on there is Mr. Hill. So that would give us five members?
Five. Do we not ever look for it in public and ask for anyone of that nature that's, you know, that would be interested in that position too? Or is it all consists of commissioners or things of that nature?
You know, the hard work for us, we're always looking. I mean, everybody, I get people to stop by my office a lot of times and say, hey, I'd like to serve. The board a lot of times will also debt people and then can find dates their interests. And so a lot of times, we're always looking for citizens to get involved. We don't make an advertisement for it, you know. But again, by doing it this way, if someone approaches you, you know they got the heart. You know that they've got interest in doing that. But occasionally, we'll make announcements to the public, say, hey, anyone who wants to serve on the board, please come and see us, let us know where your interest is.
Okay, thank you. With John, I just wanted to comment that during the period of time when I was on the board, I was on the board for a year, and I was the chairman during the period of time that I was on the board. In March, well, in the April meeting of last year, after our one member had resigned, we repeatedly asked everyone in a Facebook Live meeting, if there were anyone in the community who were interested in serving on the board, to make themselves known, to come forward, to let us know about their interest, that they could contact any one of us who had been on the board, or the mayor, or stuff like Animal Shelter, or any of those type of things. So that invitation and that opportunity, participate is repeatedly put out there for the community. And the people who are being held before you tonight are the ones who have stepped forward to fill those roles. And if I could also respond to a question Norman had. In terms of the composition of the board, what was voted on by the body back in 2018 to fill the roles on the board was ideal, but it's not been able to be maintained. For example, one of the seats on the board was intended to be filled by a veterinarian and/or a representative of a veterinarian. We have two veterinary clinics here in Benton County. They don't want to be involved at this point. So, and that may change at some point, but right now, there's no veterinary clinic representative who wants to be involved. So that leaves you with an empty seat if you're requiring it to be that identity. And/or you can choose a person who's willing to serve. And that, and I think in the long run, as the mayor said, that that's the better option, is to choose the person who is willing to serve. Even though some of our boards don't require a lot of active, you know, interaction other than maybe coming to a meeting or whatnot, those aren't the best ideal ways to do that. And one problem that we had repeatedly with the board during the year that I was on it was each person who was a board member had a full-time job or better and really did not have a sufficient amount of time available to donate for voluntary activity or to, you know, activity beyond just coming to the board meeting and being all they can do. So again, you've got these folks who've stepped up who want to do this. And Debbie Kyle has a great deal of experience. She's already been on this board in the past. I think you probably are very well-served by having her step forward to be on this board again. And, you know, so I think the best option you have is what we have for you tonight, which is for people who are willing to do these jobs for free.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Angela. I'd like to explain a little. Okay, there's still more discussion, you know, like a little poll. Angie Hana?
Yes.
Don Patton, yes. Ward Plan? Ward Plan, yes. Diana Ferguson? No. Kimmy Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Laia Dye, yes. Colin Carter, yes. Gary Carter, yes. Dylan Power?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Rochelle Heel? Yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Gerald Higgs, yes. Ron Cawker, yes. Mary Cowherd, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? We know that it's a task, so we can move on to resolution number two. Resolution making reperformance and new performance to the Agriculture Extension Committee.
Chairman, do you need a motion?
Wait, we're waiting for it to come up on our tablet.
Okay, thank you.
We're just gonna stand by. Sorry, we're, but the computer was supposed to give forty thousand seconds. The Melton has to stop. Our computer's done, has another one listening for sixty seconds. George, it's a new performance, a reperformance to the Agriculture Extension Committee. Now, we'll have to do that part of the hour. Do you have your resolution in front of you? So you can say the names? I'll have, I'll call him out in just a minute to that.
Go ahead and vote this as a resolution one for the Animal Shelter. So the two that passes, we need one.
Okay.
Vote again?
Vote again, if the computer's screwed up. The table record is still prominent, although you guys did.
We didn't, it's just, why was it?
Yeah, we're still on resolution one.
Okay. So now we can move on. Sorry about that, everybody. Now, we're at resolution two to make the new performance and the reperformance to the Agriculture Extension Committee. We have a motion by Mr. Fraser and a second by Mr. Ferguson. The board has a question. Then we'll talk about any discussions, okay?
Down here.
Angie Hana?
Yes.
Angie Hana, yes. Don Patton, yes. Ward Plan? Gordon's got a word on the board. Diana Ferguson, yes. Kimmy Miller?
I need abstain, Donna, since I'm already on it.
Rocky Preston, yes. Laia Dye, yes. Colin Carter, yes. Gary Carter?
Abstain.
Boy, Gary Carter. Gary Carter?
Abstain.
I asked, Roy Callow, yes. Phil Melton, yes. Rochelle Heel, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Gerald Higgs, yes. Ron Cawker, yes. Mary Cowherd, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Anyone wish to change their vote? No, she carries. Fifteen, yes. Two, two, no. Two passes. Yeah, it's not going to pass. Let's hear it for the school. By resolution number three, a resolution for Benton County to opt out from approving TCRS retirement to part-time employees. So what we're going to do is we're going to accept part-time employees into the retirement system. Is that correct?
We're going to exclude. This is not dependent, we got to do the second.
They were already.
They never, we never provided the time for it.
That's what I thought.
And so this is just a negative, we got to do the second.
You're really caught up. Is that, if I understand that, I didn't know, I didn't. Okay. So we have a caution by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Patton. Anyone want to ask any questions about it? Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman Ford. I've looked closer at this resolution since budget meeting. And it's pretty summed up in the first words. Exclude its future part-time employees. Now, talking about the part-time employees we have now, but future employees, part-time employees from membership in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. My question is, Chairman, and it may take the mayor to answer it. How does our county benefit with passage of this resolution?
What happens is, you know, with part-time employees, it requires budgetary out to fund us paying into the retirement system. So, and with part-time employees, we know there's a lot of turmoil, you know. So, so we've never really been in the habit of, you know, paying into the retirement system for part-time for two weeks, plus for, I mean, it's up to y'all. We could do it if y'all want to.
Can I say more, Chairman? Permission to speak? I was provided some information. If my information's wrong, tell me. State of Tennessee offers an employee, an employer, match of $1 for every $1 you contribute, up to $50 a month. It's not likely somebody making eight or nine dollars an hour is going to, part-time is going to make a lot of contributions. So am I, am I correct that, that the state is matching their $1 contribution?
Well, I know that the state's rules are different than ours. You know what I mean? The state's just, has an incentive to pay into the retirement system, more so than funding the retirement system. Lori, do you know more about this? I mean, it's one of those things that you can have a part-time there one day, they'll do all labor to do, to put them into the system, begin collecting payments, and then they quit on you two or three weeks later or something like that. So the part-time, there's just always been some instability there. The body has never opted to do this in the past. If you feel like it's something we need to look at, I mean.
Maybe Lori can, let's let Larry, Lori talk. I do know it takes five years to get invested, a person can. Work a short time, Lori.
To get invested, it's a five-year, but that's fully vested. You get percentage of investment up to five years. It's a, the TCRS is a defined benefit plan. Defined benefit plan means how much the employees want to get in retirement is set. What changes each year is how much the county has to put in and how much the state has to put in in order to meet that required amount based on their best estimates. They have actuators that do the calculations of what they expect they're going to have to pay out when that person retires. So they have all these calculations, and they say, okay, when this person is expected to retire, and based on their life expectancy, which is based on the race, gender, you know, climate, everything. Then we can. Then we think, we're going to have to pay out this much to that person. So, it's a defined benefit plan. They're going to get that amount no matter what. So, what the county and what the state has to put in is going to change. Each year, they tell the county how much you're going to have to put in. This will be the longer calculations and this is going to be the overall percentage. But what the county puts in, what the state puts in is not the same. It's not a dollar for dollar thing. Sometimes the state puts in more, sometimes the county puts in more. They do their calculations and they say, you need to have a total amount of this fund for Benton County for two point one million dollars. And right now, you have one point nine million. So, you're going to have to put in over two hundred thousand. That comes out of this proceeding. Then the next year, they're going to look at it and say, based on their employees, you need two point one million, but you've got two point four million already in your money. So, you're going to offer funding. So, this is the regular thing, what would you put in, but you're going to offer funding. So, as far as part-time people go, a lot of times what the state says to look at is a cost benefit analysis. Is it costing you more to offer this benefit to the employees than the benefit that's going to come out of it? And majority of them have, well, I can't say majority. A lot that I have worked with have said that they don't want to offer it part-time because of the clerical costs for somebody who might come in and work a total of twenty hours a year. And they've done all this paperwork, and then the state also has to go over the paperwork for somebody who was temporary or part-time. So, but it's, of course, ultimately, the county commission's decision how they're going to do that. But that's kind of how the TCRS works, is that.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you.
Commissioner Heel?
Um, I have a question for the mayor. Exactly how many part-time employees it would, does this affect?
Well, any one who's a part-time employee, I mean, I was, I don't really have a number of how many part-time employees.
Mayor, last time I checked, there were six or seven.
Laura Conover?
Yes.
Any other questions? And let's, um, just go ahead and vote. Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Piper, yes. Ward Plant? Ward Plant, yes. Daniel Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Dye, yes. Norman Fraser, yes. Mary Carter, yes. Dwight Fowler, yes. Phil Melton, yes. Rochelle Heel, yes. My Hunter, yes. Roseanne Moore, yes. Cheryl Peaches, yes. Ron Conover, yes. Mary Powers, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries seventeen, yes. And resolution number four. Resolution budgeting fund in the amount of forty two hundred and fifty dollars within the Benton County Library budget. I have a last and final question for Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Patton. Um, Commissioner Ferguson? Um, motion approved, yes. Oliver, question? Go ahead. Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Piper, yes. Ward Plant? Ward, Ward Plant, yes. Daniel Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston? Clay, Clay Dye, yes. Norman Fraser, yes. Mary Carter, yes. Dwight Fowler, yes. Phil Melton, yes. Rochelle Heel, yes. My Hunter, yes. Roseanne Moore, yes. Cheryl Peaches, yes. Ron Conover, yes. Mary Powers, yes. Rock, do we need to, to vote, please? One time, yeah. Anyone, Rocky Preston, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries seventeen, yes. Okay, um, the commissioner's asked if we take a comment for it.
Second?
Can I amend that to ten minutes?
Uh, yes.
Rocky, we see you, buddy.
I'm glad you're here. Thank you. Enjoy your conversation.
Thank you, Sean. Hey, Norm.
It also, it also, those employees just stay on. There's these benefits if they leave and they're going to have to pay. So, the structure of the way you're maybe thinking about not working, it's going to prefer teams that stay on and continue their sports, which cuts down the costs. Because every time you have turnovers, you've got to, you've got to spend your money and onboard. You know, exiting and onboarding, so, like I said, they're grandfathers. Of course, you're not going to, you're going to take the cost. But every time you onboard, you have a lot of clerical costs. And how is that, it's putting money into a position that has a hot, that has a hot... It is, and it's just such a convoluted calculation.
Is one of you girls one of them? Michelle, Michelle Tyler probably makes sure it's safe. Yeah. I've worked with her a lot, yeah. She said safe. All right. Oh, she's always been good to me.
Most counties that I've worked with, and I hate to say this, but it's true. If it is called the mama, they've seen it back. Go through the wrong... At least they stated for Hannity was...
Probably actually even elaborate on these three here.
Okay, uh, sex offender registries. Well, that's a reserve account. Those are towed, like, spent the money, had vehicles towed. When the people pay the gift, their vehicles, we charge them what it costs on the space. Right, but that's how, that's the law, that's what you want.
About two thousand. We have four, so where is this from statistically so far?
Uh, five hundred deductible or something, which comes out every day. Two thousand dollars per day plus the regular maintenance on the twenty four days.
Well, this is empty. It gets a point.
No, sir.
Around the local, it's called the local.
Right, well, citizens, citizens are always welcome to call the sheriff's office, always available.
No, sir, let me, let me... Chairman? I believe that we need bathrooms upstairs. Everybody has to go downstairs and it takes a long time to get these bathrooms down there. Well, my understanding is it doesn't walk from the inside.
It doesn't.
And there's no way I'm going to stand there and someone could go, woo-hoo! You know?
Well, it's locked on the outside. I mean, it stays locked.
But you're not locking the end there.
And then the keys get in it, and then once you get in, the door shuts, it's locked.
And who's going to let you out?
Well, you're getting, it looks...
Illegally.
It's locked from the inside. We'll try to take care of that.
Let's move on to, um, resolution number five. This is resolution, resolution budgeting fund in the amount of six thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars thirty cents within the Sheriff's Department budget. We have a motion by Don Hutton and a second by Kenneth Miller. Any? Um, this failed the budget. Uh, Mr. Miller?
I'd just like an explanation of miscellaneous refunds, sale of property, and what the insurance recovery is for.
Is that a question you want direct to, uh, Mr. Miller?
Probably Rochelle. I'm going to buy that.
First off, uh, we would need to amend under increased expenditures. The amount for towing services was incorrect. The correct amount should be six hundred and fifty dollars, which would equal the, the correct total. That is a typo on my part, and I do apologize for it. And, um, as far as an explanation to what the decreased revenues are, uh, sex offender registries, the money we collect from sex offenders that has to go into, um, the restricted account for that fund. Miscellaneous refunds are tow bills that we collected. We had vehicles towed, we paid the bills, and when the owners came to get the vehicles, we charged them exactly what it cost us to tow the vehicles. We generally put that money back into tow-in services so that we can keep towing vehicles. Selling property was a car that was scrapped that went through due diligence and was abandoned. An insurance recovery is where a police car suffered damage in a wreck, and we paid our five hundred deductible and we paid the repairs. And the five thousand three hundred fifteen is the part minus our deductible that the insurance is giving to us to put back into motor vehicle repairs.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Fowler?
Well, Commissioner Miller answered, asked a question there. The other thing I would, that, what is the tow-in service? What is that? Is that where, is that just vehicles, uh, shared private vehicles being towed in, or?
No, sir. Once in a while, we do have to tow one of our own. We try not to let that happen, but breakdowns happen. If a person is pulled over who is under the influence, their vehicle has to be towed. They can't drive it. Now, occasionally, if the person has a sober driver that can take the vehicle home, the officer will allow them to do that to prevent us from having a tow. If a vehicle is out in the road abandoned, if it's off the road, we do not have a tow. But if it's in the road or endangered traffic, we will have a tow. If there's an accident and vehicles are in an accident and in the roadway, we will have them towed. We try to, depending on the circumstances, if the person wants to have it towed to a location and they choose the tow truck driver, we don't even touch it. A lot of the times, the tow trucks can take it to their lots, we don't touch it. But if it has to come to our location, there is a tow bill and we have to pay it.
Uh, Commissioner Miller?
The insurance recovery should go back into the general fund for accounting purposes, not back into the Sheriff's Department. If he runs short of money in that maintenance account, he can write a resolution for funds from the other side, fund balance. It should not go back into that account.
Uh, Sheriff, you recognize?
Chairman, we've always done this the same way as we're requesting to do it now. Put some money back in there. Put some money back in there. This is, this is what we've got, this is what we put back in, it's just turning it over, that's all it is. Uh, we have to keep these cars on the road. And when there's, when there's an insurance claim, that's all it is. We're getting, the money's coming right back, and I don't know why we'd change it, there's always that there.
Commissioner Frazier?
I've caught wind of two or three things involving the sheriff's department and the highway department when it comes to monies like this, and it been part of some of the conversations. But if we've always done it this way, I don't think we should change mid-stream. If you wanna change the way the monies flow and the process with either department, I recommend that we do it when it's budget time, into new year, so they know how to plan their budget and their new season. Thank you. And if y'all move forward on this, uh, uh, resolution where it says, when you make your amendment at six hundred and fifty, keep in mind, we also need to take out the word decrease revenues and make that increase revenues. And just to kinda give you some budgetary, uh, I guess you'd say, the approach. A lot of it, uh, when they say re-budget it or budget it back into the general fund, is to keep the transfer from happening at the end of the year, you know? Uh, if we continue to pump up a particular account that's not gonna be utilized, and at the end of the year, they're transferring thousands of dollars, hundreds of dollars, into another account, it's spending, you know? So that, a little bit of the philosophy to that is to avoid that particular action, you know? To make sure that we're optimizing, uh, the budget. Now, the sheriff's department does have certain type of, you know, revenues and expenditure, that was what you call, they're automatic. I mean, you know, that's the way he's got to be able to function on certain budgetary line items. Uh, I leave that to y'all to decide, you know, what's relevant and what can be held off until later time, we can keep that discussion going. But, but this particular resolution, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's coming in from, uh, you know, wrecked vehicles, you've got your sex offender registry fee, that is pretty much, you know, that's money that definitely goes back into the sheriff's department. But if you do make it, move forward on it, make sure that y'all make a proper amendment to the resolution.
Commissioner Frazier?
I was going to make an amendment to it for the towed in to make it six hundred and fifty dollars.
You're making that motion?
Yes.
Second.
Rochelle has actually already notified the system to do the motion, so I'm gonna have to have a second motion I can use.
That's fine, that's fine.
Well, that's on the original, this is the amendment. So, when I do the amendment here.
So, do we need to do at the same time the decrease, make the increase, and do it all? One powder doesn't have to be two separate ones?
How are we recommending doing it at the same time?
Rochelle, wherever you are.
Yes.
What do you care?
It says decrease revenues, increase expenditures, where did I miss?
It should be an increase in the revenue, that's the money that's gone.
Okay, I thought it was decreasing the revenues that we paid it into.
That's fine. It's increasing money that's gone.
Okay, we do them both at the same time?
Yes, absolutely.
Nobody had nothing ready. We go back to the other way, we can get out of here quicker.
No, Joe, I'm, I'm still doing this.
Uh, we're voting on the sheriff's resolution, but we're not already there yet. We'll have to do some work in the computer. We're gonna vote, but we had to amend it.
What is amended? What exactly?
Okay, we're amending, um, tow-in services from three seventy-five to six hundred and fifty dollars. Do you want more? Secretory six hundred and fifty dollars. We're amending one of the line items from three hundred and fifty dollars up to six hundred and fifty dollars, that's what we amended.
Three seventy-five, six fifty is what I got. That's Phil, I'm making come out of that.
Do you understand?
Rochelle?
Rochelle, it's my understanding, we're putting this, uh, insurance recovery back into three thirty-eight? And how much money did you say we had in it now?
A little over two thousand.
Right around two thousand?
A little over.
Little over, so we're, we're, we don't have a lot of money before we're putting insurance recovery back in, I wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Miller?
My question was, I guess, for Ms. F- Ms. Dana, you said that the, uh, budget committee turned this down. Was there discussion or something we needed to know, so we understand why that was turned down?
Um, we thought that the insurance recovery should have gone back into, um, the general fund.
Okay, that, that was my question.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I would like to elaborate on something. The sheriff's department has given twenty-five thousand dollars in maintenance and repair vehicles per year for their fleet. We now have a fully staffed deputy roster. We're only missing our third investigator. That means we have twenty-four officers driving twenty-four vehicles. Okay, now, the way they drive these cars, these are police cars. This isn't my little Chevy Sonic that I toodle back and forth to work. These are going the length and breadth of the county several times in a day or shift. Oil changes, fifty dollars. Each of these patrol cars needs about five oil changes a year because they're driven a lot more than your personal car. So, two hundred and fifty dollars. Brakes, two hundred twenty-nine dollars. The way they drive these cars, emergency response, they generally need two brake jobs a year. So, that's another four hundred fifty-eight dollar per car. Mountain balancing the tires, okay? Their tires are changed maybe twice a year. Main Street Towing will do it for twelve bucks, so that's twenty-four dollars. And alignment, when you change your tires, you need an alignment. That's another sixty dollars times two, a hundred and twenty dollars. Wipers, they may go through three sets of wipers a year, twenty-four dollars a pop, that's another seventy-two dollars. Headlights for these cars are fifty dollars a bulb. They may have to change their headlights twice a year, that's two hundred. That comes out to one thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars a deer, a deer, per car, just for the basic maintenance, not counting if an alternator goes, a fuel pump, what have you. That's actually more than what we're given for the year in maintenance. Now, a collision is unexpected, that is not your regular maintenance. We have to pay that out of the pocket, and we get it back from the insurance minus five hundred dollars, and you're gonna quibble about, do we need that?
I don't have any more discussion. Rochelle? Yeah, we're voting on the amendment. Yes? Yes, ma'am? I can? The question is, he wants to know if prisoners don't have to do any of this stuff, like. The sheriff says no, but they don't help with that anymore.
It's a liability.
He says that it's a liability for them to do that. Did you hear me? Okay.
Let him work on his car. That's driving. What about the students?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Plank says he doesn't agree with that, but.
Okay.
That's just your opinion, Mr. Plank. Okay, uh, let's move on. The amendment's passed.
No, we gotta vote.
What's your amendment?
The change of six fifty.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Hutton, yes.
Don't have anything to do with it yet.
Don Hutton? Yes, Ford Plant? Ford Plant? Ford, can you hear me? Ford, okay. Okay. Emma Parkinson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Lattie, yes. Lauren Kreider, yes. Gary Burt, yes. Dwayne Fowler, yes. Bill Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Murray, yes. Roseanne Moore, yes. Carol Page, yes. Ronnie Copper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Carrie, sixteen, yes. One, no. And now we're gonna go back and vote for this resolution as it was amended. Ford, we're voting on the resolution now as it was amended. Um, there's someone asked to speak, so let's vote, please. Angie Hearn, vote or vote as amended. Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Hutton, no. Ford Plant? Ford Plant, no. Emma Parkinson, yes. Kenneth Miller, no. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Lattie, yes. Lauren Kreider, yes. Gary Burt, yes. Dwayne Fowler?
Ass.
Uh, Bill Elton, no. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Murray, yes. Roseanne Moore, yes. Carol Page, yes. Ron Copper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Chuck Berry, yes. Four, no. One, press.
I'll probably go back to the number two minutes myself.
Okay, the computer is shutting down, we're not going to vote.
No, no, you can still vote, they just can't tell you that they want to vote. That's the only way to stop.
Okay. Let's move on to resolution number six. Resolution budgeting funds in the amount of one thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-six cents within the sheriff's department budget. Uh, anyone want to speak? Mr. Frazier?
This failed the budget.
On the board of chairman?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, Commissioner Ferguson, there was three present at the, um, budget meeting. Darren was out, Angie was out, and I didn't oppose any of these sheriff resolutions, so is that a failure, or is that just a motion without any recommendation?
You would have to have three yes votes, and three for them, for it to pass, and it did not receive three yes votes.
Yes, but it, it, it just, it was, uh, was, am I not correct in saying that it was to be a motion without a recommendation, or a resolution without a recommendation?
It was not recommended.
Cause nobody, there was not three votes not to recommend this resolution, that's what I'm saying about.
It did not receive three votes to be recommended, therefore it was not recommended.
I stand corrected, thank you.
Anyone else, uh, go back on lines, if you want to speak, Mr.. Okay, Commissioner Frazier?
Again, I know this money, I believe this money is kinda new avenue. Uh, I'm gonna press, this may be a new avenue of funding that the sheriff's department's receiving. I don't know if they've received it this way before, but we hired that normal lady group to chase this money for different departments in our county. But, again, if we're gonna change the process that we've been doing in the past, I recommend we wait till the new budget year. Moving money around. Thank you.
Is this not favor money, Kenny? It's overtime you worked there in the store.
It's overtime for the store, haven't we come to?
Right.
It's just putting the money back into cover, our overtime.
Commissioner Hill?
I would like to point out that the highway department also petitioned to have the money collected from FEMA put back into their accounts, and no one's objecting to that.
The highway department is totally separate from the sheriff's department and the court house. What they do and what we do are totally different things.
I know that for that.
Like, uh, Commissioner Hill?
I just had a question. If we put this money back in that count, will that affect maintenance of effort for next year? That's the only thing I would. Well, then it's not gonna, it's just putting money back in that he didn't know it was gonna spend.
Because they already spent it, it could affect maintenance of effort.
It's, it's more of a reimbursement, the way I see it.
We could, we could put so much money in overtime, that money was used to pay part of this, therefore that money should go back into the general fund, not back into the overtime account. And again, as we emphasized two years ago about fiscal policy, is that we've gotten the habit of really re-budgeting it, you know? And so this is, it's not that you can't put the money in there what it's needed, but if we continue a behavior of continually just refunding simply because we're ref- we're refunding back to the account, we're encouraging spending that money. And what we're trying to do is be efficient with the money. Doesn't think that overtime is there, but if he's sitting there with ten thousand, and I'm just gonna say, Sheriff, I'm using sheriff as an example, but anyone could be guilty of this, they're sitting there with a ten thousand dollars of overtime in their account, it's for them to hear. You kinda wanna use it, you know? And so it's really just a fiscal practice, and y'all can determine whether that's a good behavior, if you wanna follow that. But we recommended that two years ago, that we need to begin moving it. But like I said, uh, it's up to y'all, it's how y'all want to approach that type of fiscal policy.
Can I press the button, where can I? I'm trying. Lauren, I wasn't there, maybe you can answer it, too, no. Rocky, did you tell the sheriff that this stuff would go back into at the beginning of this fiscal year?
No, my understanding was any FEMA money would go back into the, uh, general fund. That was the understanding that I had of FEMA money. That's totally different than insurance money or other things of that measure.
That's totally different than insurance money or other things of that measure, but the FEMA money being reimbursed would go in general fund.
I do not have, I don't have any word on that. Did we pass a resolution to do that?
There, I did not believe that there was a resolution, that was an understanding at the time.
We've had a lot of understandings that don't get followed up on around here, so I recommend a resolution in the future.
If anyone else?
A second.
There's no more discussion, we'll vote. Angie Hearn?
No.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Patton?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Angie Hearn, no. Don Patton, no. Ford Plant? Ford Plant, no. Anna Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, no. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, no. Duane Fowler?
Pass. A lot of understanding.
Phil Elton, no. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary. Thank, yes. Eight, no. One, pass. All right, moving on to resolution number eight. Resolution budgeting funds received from FEMA in the amount of seventy-five thousand two hundred dollars and sixty-four cents within the highway department budget. Okay, let's back up to resolution number seven, I'm sorry.
I'll do what you tell me to do.
That's okay. We'll go back to in order. Resolution budgeting funds received from the two thousand nineteen CDBG grant in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents within fund one seventy-two community development. A motion by Commissioner Ferguson and second by Commissioner Nutter. And Commissioner Ferguson, you recognize?
It was recommended by Bud.
No one else? Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Patton? Don Patton, yes. Ford Plant?
Yes.
Ford Plant, yes. Anna Ferguson, yes. Anne Snow, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, yes. Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary, seventeen, yes. And now we're moving on to resolution number eight. Resolution budgeting funds received from FEMA in the amount of twenty-nine dollars two hundred dollars and sixty-four cents within the highway department budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Frager. And Commissioner Fowler, you recognize?
You know, it's not on this, not on this resolution here. I'll go back to number six just for a minute, I apologize. But what happens in that case there that failed, where does this money go? The reason I pass on that is I didn't really understand the whole situation, if this is the, where's in the general fund? So, does the sheriff have an overtime fund that he has? And then at any time that overtime fund depletes, we can give him some money.
Rather than a resolution for money from the unassigned fund balance if he needs it.
Okay.
Anyway, I apologize, I just didn't understand that they were moving.
Okay, back to the highway department resolution. Do you have any questions about that one? Don't vote on it. Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton, yes. Angie Hearn, yes. Ford Plant? Ford Plant, yes. Anna Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, yes. Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary. Seventeen, yes. Resolution number nine. Resolution budgeting funds received from state aid funds in the amount of five hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars within the highway department budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Do you have anyone have any question or discussion?
I have a motion to amend by Don Patton.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Patton, yes. Ford Plant? Ford Plant, yes. Anna Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, yes. Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, yes. Duane Fowler?
I'd like to speak. I guess I was quick enough on the button. This money comes from the state.
Where's the middle of the vote on? I'm sorry.
I'll pass.
Duane Fowler, pass. Phil Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary, sixteen, yes. One, pass. Resolution number ten. Budgeting funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars within the school budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Nutter and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Do you have any questions? Can I vote on? Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Patton, yes. Ford Plant?
Yes.
Ford Plant, yes. Anna Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, yes. Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary, seventeen, yes. Okay, we'll move on to resolution number eleven. Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund and budget within the general budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Ferguson, do you recognize?
This was recommended by Bud and it's due Monday.
Okay, Commissioner Miller?
I just like to know what it'd be spent for, Kenny. What the twenty-five hundred is gonna be spent for?
Well, we've got to buy the seed and stuff to put the garden in, and then we've got to relocate the building and everything up there, get our fence back up and everything. So, it'll cover all of that combined, is what it's for.
And the lime. The lime, the lime in it.
Oh, yeah, that field's got to have a lime and stuff.
Well, we're just gonna fertilize the park, we're gonna use this year though, not the whole ten acres, right?
Well, we plan on using it all. That's what we've been trying to use before, but we didn't have the equipment to do.
Oh, you're going, okay. Goodness.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Angie Hearn, yes. Don Patton, yes. Ford Plant?
Yes.
Ford Plant, yes. Anna Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, yes. Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary, seventeen, yes. Okay, resolution. Okay, it's resolution number twelve. Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of sixty-eight thousand from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund and budget within the general budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Ferguson, you recognize?
Yes, this was recommended by Bud, and it is new money, so it has to take two thirds. And question, Rochelle, do you check the anti-life line?
Yes, she is checking with her superiors on whether, because she says they don't think they've ever done that before, but she will check with her superiors, see if they will offer coverage for our jail, and they will get back with us. And when I get that answer, I'll bring it before the commission.
Hopefully we'll have a price, and we can have a resolution at the same time that we save us money.
Yeah, it's not much. You buy a group policy, it's not very reasonable.
You don't get the family for a hundred bucks.
Yeah. I bought commercial.
Resolution number thirteen.
Well? We got a vote on the last.
I'm missing some of these resolutions, I'm sorry. Okay, no one else? Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Yes. Don Patton, yes. Ford Plant? Ford Plant, yes. Anna Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller? Yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, yes. Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary, seventeen, yes. Okay, two thirds to the door. Okay, resolution thirteen. Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of one thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund and budget within the solid waste higher disposable utility budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Frager. And Commissioner Frager, you recognize?
I've got just a stupid question, a couple of them actually. This facility, does it have water and stuff like that? Okay, so, the real question I've got with the added utility bills the last couple of weeks, is this enough?
Well, this is really gross from a water leak that we had had for a long time that we had to get repaired, so that's something we didn't start the beginning of the year with.
You feel like we already have?
It may not be enough, but...
You can deal with it later?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes, I just, I got, I don't know if it's a question or a complaint, but I've had several people go to this tired, disposable place during the hours that they say they're open, and there's nobody there. They went for a month straight, every day, and there was nobody there. I mean, we need to do something if we can't, if the guy that's there don't wanna be there, we need to find somebody that will.
And, and he came down with COVID, and that's, so he was out for a two week period of time, and that, we just really didn't have that up.
This went way more than two weeks. I know it was more than two weeks.
Well, and then his wife came down with COVID, so he had quarantine because of that, you know, so, so, but that didn't hit back to back, it was, there's some weeks in between. But that's one of the things, and we found this out with the airport, we have found this out with other operations. We're only one man deep in a lot of these type of operations, so I'm all for us considering budgeting, part-time lines and things like that to be able to get some people hired.
No, we don't need to hire nobody, we just need the ones that are there to show them. I mean, I know what you're saying, but this is one of the more of the big C. I know it has.
Chairman, or Mayor, isn't that a part-time job?
Yeah.
Okay, so that might explain why he's not there some of the time.
But when you have a sign that says you're open from here to here.
Okay, it's two and a half days a week. My duty is a half-day window.
Right. I told him just to throw him over the fence and go on with it, if you try that many times.
Well, the best thing to do is just to stack them up on the outside, and then we'll get to them. Again, I'm more happy to pursue, match a person with time.
All right, channel discussion, just like two thirds, vote. Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Ford Plant? Ford Plant? Ford Plant? Ford Plant, yes. Anna Ferguson, yes. Kenneth Miller, yes. Rocky Preston, yes. Clay Adada, yes. Lauren Frager, yes. Gary Ferg, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Elton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Page, yes. Ronnie Harper, yes. Mary Coward, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion, Gary, seventeen, yes. The next resolution was a resolution from the school to appropriate funds in the amount of forty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars from the unassigned fund balance within fund one fifty-one debt service in order to cover the school's ESSI loan repayments for the remainder of the fiscal year. What I've been told this will have been, has been pulled.
I still want to talk. Can I talk about it?
Yes.
As far as, pardon my ignorance, I was under the impression, if they're asking for money on that resolution, I was under the impression that we weren't gonna be out anyone. Or we just gotta pay it first, and then they're gonna reimburse us?
What it is, is we pay that through our savings. There's been some, we balanced in ninety-nine one hundred, which is the transfer of debt service on our school bond. The auditor said that was fine, but it hadn't worked out for us, so what we're gonna do, they originally told us that we could not pay it directly to ESSI, that it would be an audit funded. But now they're saying that we can, so if we can take care of it through our office, that would be fine. So, we're gonna transfer that money, and there's, that's, you're exactly right, Mr. Frager, it will not cost the county one penny, that's coming out of the school budget. And that's why they pulled this resolution, because not pulling it out of your debt service.
But pulling it out of your debt service?
No, 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 no. We budgeted this money in our transfer of debt service, there was just a misunderstanding. We've got that fixed, it was budgeted in expenditures in ninety-nine one hundred.
Was not the concept that our savings made the payment?
Yes, we deducted our utilities bill, the amount of the payment in the budget.
So, there's no extra money anywhere?
No, no extra money, no, but it's, the savings paid.
I gotta get it down a little bit on a different level, thank you, sir.
Okay, now we're on to twenty-six, resolution number fifteen. Resolution off browsing the issuance of entry to bearing school system capital outlet note series twenty-two one in the amount up to exceed two million dollars. We have a motion by Commissioner Nutter and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Ferguson?
This was recommended by Bud. This was recommended by Buzier.
This, this does not take the two thirds of the vote.
Question, Chairman?
Okay. Mr. Florence, the question is, will you itemize where this money's gonna be used?
Well, I gotta explain to the budget committee, when we originally started working on this project, estimated about 2.5 million, we received ESER funds that we can use for capital outlay. So, that's the reason, we couldn't borrow over 2 million in the first place, because it's a capital outlay, no. Our plan now, if they approve our ESER 2, which is the federal relief, we can use a million of that towards the roof projects. So, if they approve that, then we may not have to borrow the full 2 million. Or we also have some other capital outlays, like Briwood School, which is still running on a chiller. And it was about 55 degrees over there today, this time of year, it's really tough to regulate the temperature. So, that would be, if we could utilize that federal money and have a little left, then we could possibly use it for a project like that. But if, the first obligation will be the roofs at Camden Central High School and Big Sandy High School. And they're, as hard as it is to believe, are 21 years old, our new schools. And also replacing HVAC units on both those schools.
Did you understand that, Ward? Okay, do you want to comment on, do you understand what he said?
I, I really, I just, I know we've been working on this project, well, actually, we were gonna do it last spring and then COVID hit. So, you know, and then we, we, our original plan was to pay for it out of fund balance. But when interest rates dropped below 2% and, and with COVID and the uncertainty of the budget, we just felt like it was, it didn't make a lot of sense to spend our cash at this time. And we could lock in a 10-year note for 1.98%. And there's no penalty to pay it off early after four years. I think that's correct, right, Mr. Spears? I do have Marty Spears here with the Tennessee Municipal Loan Program, if anybody has a question about the loan. As far as combining, I, that's, that would be something you'd have to ask somebody else. Mr. Spears might be of the answer to that. That's probably above my expertise.
Did you understand it, on the board?
In here.
Okay, um, Mr. Spears is here, that's with the loan, did you want him to speak on combining those loans?
Yes, they could be combined and such like that. The one thing is, is my understanding, you are on a 15-year payout, and the school's is doing it too, so it's two different things. The other thing's the cost. The cost issue, of issuance on this capital outlay, that's $1,000. If you go over two, over the 2 million, then you're gonna have to either do a public building authority, which we do, which is gonna greatly increase the cost, or go to market more than two. So, that's gonna greatly increase the cost there. So, that's, that's the difference. Plus, I think, they're ready to go, you know, with construction plans and all that.
Did you understand, Mr. Spears?
Your costs are gonna be greater. I was, I'm not a financial advisor, and we're not financial advisors. We give options of financing, because that's just the way, what we do. We're not financial advisors. But I can tell you, the cost is much greater if you combine these loans, just on cost of issuance.
Did you understand that?
I'll just say that, it won't cost more to combine them. What you do is you get a better interest rate over time. It's just whether the commission wants to, you know, treat each project separate and respective to itself, or to allow the schools to do their thing, and then the county to do their thing, and so... Uh, but as far as saving money, of course, the terms would have to change to save money. I mean, we, we're not gonna do a 10-year, uh, project. Our, our could be more like a 15-year, uh, bond. Y'all are wanting 10, you know, so, so, so there's a lot of...
Schools are wanting, schools are wanting 10, because that's what they're paying.
So, there's a lot of differences that you have to merge, uh, to be able to make this happen. You know, we, but we have one month to make it happen, um, just whether y'all wanna do it 4.5, or 1, 2.5, and 1.2, and just allow the terms to be respectful of themselves.
There's no reason to force the school system into a 15-year payout. They already have their funding set for 10 years. They're ready to go. Bids can be led, and they're, they're ready to move. Uh, and, you know, it's gonna just slow them down again. And the county can take care of their...
This doesn't slow, this doesn't slow them down one bit. They've got the money in the bank. Uh, they can pay for the cash and actually take the loan and reimburse themselves if they...
They chose to do the loan, not to take it from the bank.
Correct, and that's what I was saying. It's just whether y'all want to keep these as separate transactions.
We need to keep them separate.
But we can save money in the end, if y'all took the combined route.
Commissioner Ferguson? The schools need to be separate. We need to just go on and vote on what we have in front of us. And do what we want. Uh, Commissioner Fowler?
What project are we talking about combining? What is that? Is that the county, did the petition on the wild there? I see.
That is another, I mean, if you do, uh, go to markets, there is public input also on that, where there's not on capital.
Say...
So, that could delay it.
Repeat that, so you're getting that?
Capital, if, if, if you go to market or do, over the 2 million and do the PBA loan, there's a public input period where the public income, uh, for the capital, there's not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Neal?
If you do combine them, you also run the risk of it getting voted down if commissioners don't agree with the combined package. Keeping them separate is much better for the school.
Two quick questions, Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, Director March, probably more suited to answering this question. I'll keep them very brief. Have you arrived at a price for the roofs in the HVAC system? And if you have, how did you come about that?
We had an estimate given from the architect, and it was, I asked him for a high estimate for the loan, and it was 2.4 million. Now, my experience says it'll probably be more than that, when we get the bids.
Good, thank you for your answer. That's a good answer. I've got one more question.
Okay.
Train did the, uh, project last year with the lighting system. Train specializes, that's their business, HVAC. Did they inspect the AC air condition on the roofs while they were in town?
Well, what we did on the HVACs, when the engineers come and look at the roof, they're 22 years old. So, if we put a new roof and put 22-year-old units back on those new roofs, the, according to the architects, which that's their business, they, they thought that would be physically unsanely. That they felt like it was worth the investment to put the new... Matter of fact, they said we would probably pay for the HVACs in five years, just in energy efficiency, so... So, that's the reason. Now, like the library, Mr. Preston, the gym, at the high school, we've had to replace those. So, obviously, we're not gonna put brand-new units to replace units that we've replaced in the last five years.
Thank you, good answer.
Any other questions? Can I have your call, please? Oh, Mr. Hawke, let me just speak, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Hawke, you're recognized. That one was pulled, the school pulled that resolution. Did you want to speak on this, the resolution you're on now? Of course he didn't. Okay, now. I'm hitting clearly. But it won't clear it.
Are you ready for a vote, Chairman?
Yes, I am. Angie Hahn?
Yes.
Yes. Don Patton, yes. Ward Plant? Ward Plant? Ward Plant? Ward Plant? Dana? Ward Plant? Dana Ferguson, Kenan, Dana Ferguson, yes. Kenan Miller, yes. Rodney Preston, yes. Clay Dye, yes. Norman Frederick, yes. Gary Carter, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Melton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Gates, yes. Ronnie Albrecht, no. Mary Powers, yes. Ward Plant? Anyone wish to change their vote? Pass, 15, yes, one, no. Next, um, we have two, three... We have three names, Brigitte Flashley, Brett, Donna Flashley, Jenny Phillips. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Nunn. Any questions? Angie Hahn?
Yes.
Yes. Don Patton, yes. Ward Plant? Dana Ferguson, yes. Kenan Miller, yes. Rodney Preston, yes. Clay Dye, yes. Norman Frederick, yes. Gary Carter?
Oh, yes.
Gary Carter, yes. Duane Fowler, yes. Phil Melton, yes. Rochelle Hill, yes. Mike Henry, yes. Roseanne Ward, yes. Daryl Gates, yes. Ronnie Albrecht, yes. Mary Powers, yes. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 16, yes, two, yes. Next, our agenda is any other business? Do we have any other business? Close to the term?
You know, wasn't this next month, you know, we're gonna, uh, come to the commission with our capital improvement plan. You know, it's been a long, runout process. Uh, we took an incredible amount of diligence into this project. And, um, and just to remind you, you know, tonight, y'all passed the 2 million dollar loan with no detail. We don't actually know where the money's gonna go. We don't know if it's gonna just cause anything, you know, with the British school capital. But, uh, I've, I've given you as much detail as you can possibly have on our capital improvement plan. So, I hope that it'll sell the same amount of support next month for our capital improvement plan for the county to basically address seven, eight, nine building projects. So, we're gonna accomplish quite a bit with it, and I just hope that you are fully supportive of it.
Okay, we have a motion, thank you, Chairman.
I just got a quick question. It just got brought to my attention if we're supposed to suspend the rules for TRD board money or something. Did, ask the mayor?
Um, I guess no. We can hold off to the march, to the...
All right.
No. I'll have you do the, I'll let you pick, okay? Okay, let's vote for two.